Contemplate those things in the world that are really serious right now. Thank you all. Would you please?
Okay. Webster.
Here.
Bales.
Here.
Yavro. McClung. Cavall.
Yeah.
Do we have a public delegation tonight?
No.
Okay. Item number four, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at a board meeting will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote or on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Vote to approve or disapprove minutes of the July 14th, 2020 meeting, and the July 21st, 2020 special meeting. B, vote to approve or disapprove July encumbrances, general fund purchase orders. C, vote to approve or disapprove payroll. D, vote to approve or disapprove monthly activity report. And E, vote to approve or disapprove treasurer's report. Is there a motion?
I just want to, on the fund balances, we were audited on the 25th of July, I believe. And these are our totals for this year for each fund that we had on our carryover.
Okay, and that was on the treasurer's report.
Yes, sir.
I move to, go ahead. I move to approve.
Second.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Okay. Number five, assistant principal report, calendar over.
All right, well, the big deal is tomorrow starts day one of school. And then next, I believe, that we would have going on is next Friday would be an FFA fair over at cash in the evening. So our students will be participating in the cash free fair. That's next Friday. Other than that, we're just going to be rocking and rolling.
Okay. Bus schedule about the same as last year?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
It may have to be adjusted or pushed down a few minutes because they're going to stay on the bus until they get their temperatures taken. So it may be adjusted, you know, over the next few days.
Okay. So are parents encouraged to take their temperature before they get on the bus?
Well, we would hope so, yes.
Be good.
Anybody's listening out there, take your kid's temperature.
What would the procedure be if a kid has a elevated temperature on the bus? Is all those kids on that bus at that point isolated or sent home for a monitoring timeframe or?
Well, they're all, are required to wear masks.
Okay.
So when, when they get here, if they come off that bus with an elevated temperature, they're going to be taken over to the gym and separated and given a lot of time and tested again. And then we'll make our decisions from there.
You can have a little high temperature and then it fades away and?
A lot of those little ones, you know, they have teeth coming in and different things.
You know, we want to write stuff in stone.
Everything.
Number six, superintendent report.
We've got continued progress in the outside of the gym there, in our lobby. We didn't make the July 31st deadline, and now I'm hoping we make August 31st. We've had professional development for the last two days, and we've jammed a lot of information in those two days. We're trying to get enough PPE equipment for everyone, masks, sanitation supplies, disinfectant. They're out of a lot everywhere. We've had a stressful few weeks trying to get prepared, but we think we're ready at least for tomorrow. And I'm sure we'll be changing some things after tomorrow. We have mobile water dispensers for every classroom that we purchased, and they're like luggage, so they've got a little handle. And every teacher is responsible for emptying them at the end of the day and making sure they're clean and then filling them up in the morning with ice and water. We'll have cups, so each student will have the little throwaway cups. And we won't be drinking from the water fountains. We have, we, in fact, we cut the water off the water fountains, so there's no water. We have eating arrangements lined out, so there's social distancing opportunities for all the students. Most of the elementary classes will be eating in their classrooms with their cohorts. Teachers will be wearing masks. Students will be encouraged to wear masks as well. Any visitors who come into the school must have on a mask. Temperatures will be taken as each child gets off the bus in the morning. They can't get off the bus. They're to keep on the bus till each one's checked. And we'll have someone out there to do the temp check. Okay, and every child who rides a school bus has to wear a face mask, as does a bus driver. Temperatures will be taken again after lunch in the elementary, and in high school they'll be taken again fifth hour. If a child has 100.4 degrees temp, they'll go to the holding area and they'll have to be picked up by their parents. Teachers are making seating charts so that if a child, so a child sits in the same seat every day, and if we have to look at contact situations, we'll know exactly who was around that child. We currently have 38 students who are opting to do distance learning. Thirty-eight, and that's all I have.
And a child can switch to distance in the year if they wish?
Yes, at the semester, during the semester, they can switch. But then they have to stay if they've switched once until the end of the semester.
Okay, okay. Number seven, vote to approve or disapprove child nutrition program, application agreement, and certificate of authority for 2020, 2021 school year.
And that is done online, and that's the same as last year's. With the exception of changing Lauren to Lisa.
Okay, yeah, yeah, accountability person. Is there a motion? Oh, before we go on, welcome.
Sorry I'm late, I was working and lost track of time.
Hey, you're working. That's good.
Y'all need to swear me in before we vote?
I think we need to do that, yeah. We'll swear again, we won't swear at you.
Does that have to be on the agenda to do that? Does it have to be online?
Yes, it does. It sure does.
So it'll be next?
We cannot do it as, as new business at the end?
Yeah.
Probably not, because I should have known about it and put it on there. I mean, I could have known about it, would have known about it, and should have done it.
Thank you for catching it, JB.
Back to work.
You're doing your job already, sworn in or not.
We could, we can do it next time or something comes up if we're a special, a limited special. I apologize, JB, this is all my fault.
Not worried, I'm not worried.
My fault.
Okay.
Time out.
Time out.
Oh, no, that's good, that's good.
Okay, all right, is there, is there a?
I gather my thoughts.
Oh, okay.
That's all right, too much going back and forth.
Okay, we need a motion.
Need a motion to approve the?
Make a motion.
Second motion.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Okay. Number, motion carries. Number eight, vote to approve or not approve or table contract employment of physical therapist Jane Goodman for school year 2020, 2021.
She's the physical therapist which she used for like the last ten, eight years.
Yeah, and about how many children utilize her services?
We have a lot. She, she charges by the hours.
Oh, right.
How many would you say?
Oh, it's went down over the years. I'm saying probably between seven and 10 this time here.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve Jean Goodman for the next school year.
Second motion.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Okay, number nine. Vote to approve or not approve or table contract employment of occupational therapist Sherri Robertson for school year 2020, 2021. And she's been here quite a while.
She's been here about the same time as the other one.
Wasn't this one just on here a couple months back? Has something changed?
No, nothing's changed.
That was speech.
That was speech.
We had a speech.
Assistant. Yeah, we had a speech assistant. Yeah, and the, the, I didn't realize it till my daughter became an occupational therapist. But the difference between the two is that physical therapy generally works with things below the waist, and occupational therapy generally works above the waist. And they're really different skill sets.
And the occupational is preparing them to, you know, handwriting and to use skills.
All those things, yes. And maybe wonders.
Make a motion, approve number nine.
Second motion.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Number 10. Motion carries. Okay, number, number 10, vote to approve, not approve, or table contract employment of speech therapist Mona Ryan, Board of Regents of the University of Oklahoma Health Sciences Center on behalf of the College of Allied Health Communication Sciences and Disorders Department for school year 2020, 2021. And then the assistant works under her, correct?
Yes, and this is the same one that we had on previously. However, when Lauren was not with us for that short period of time, we rescinded this because we didn't want to have Mona if we didn't have a speech therapist, because she's our OU and she's the supervisor. So we just made a brand-new contract, has the same amount of money, everything's just the same, but we needed to do it again so it would be a legal document.
Make a motion.
Second.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Number 11. Vote to approve or not approve the following updated or revised OSSBA, India Homa policies.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you go ahead.
The FDC R1 attendance policy, it did have a revision in June. And what they did was to take out, thus, any absence from those classes represented an educational loss to the student. And I'm sure this all had to do with the pandemics, why they made these changes. And then they also eliminated, in accordance with the policy of the Board of Education, each student in high school and junior high is required to attend each class unless an absence is excused a minimum of so much percent of the time in order to receive credit. So they just eliminate that. And I'm sure that all came about, you know. And so that was the only change on that one. And then that was revision one, R1. That may not stand for revision, I think it does. And then also, okay, that was the whole thing, so I'll pass that around so y'all can take a look at it. And you can see where they lined out those two areas that I mentioned. And then, hold on, that's going around. Do you mind if I go ahead and talk about the next one?
Sure.
Anyway, okay, the next one is EHDF, and that's online instruction. And so they, they made some changes in the online instruction because we're using so much of it, and they, I did the definitions, and I think we already had those. And I was trying to see what exactly had changed. They, they just added a few things, like students at remote sites who participate in online courses offer to be responsible for providing their own equipment and internet access. However, in our new plan that y'all will see shortly, we're working to make sure students have hotspots if they don't have any access, and that they could check out their Chromebooks from our school. And then also, the Temanji tribe has been wonderful in assisting the students that don't have access to make sure they have the equipment, either a laptop or Chromebook, and a hotspot. So they, they are wonderful to help us out with that. The next one is records investigation. And this is just guidelines for Phyllis to make sure that we get everybody checked by the OSBI who is employed at our school. And get fingerprinted and all of that. The next one is sexual harassment of students. And this one is pretty much like it was, but there, there are some more details. They did take, any employee found to have engaged in sexual harassment, students shall be subject to sanctions, including but not limited to warning, suspension, termination, subject to applicable procedural and due process. This has changed, it's more, you know, you have to notify the state department, they lose their teaching license, and it's, it's very, very serious, so.
Did the report form change also?
There's a report form, yes, for reporting it.
It's very important.
Very important, yes.
And so, the, oh, and then F is related to E. And then G is the written report that goes on the end of it.
And these are all OSSBA policies that they, and as they update them, they send them to us so that we can be aware. In fact, I think you all probably got it in the.
I think we got the email on that.
PSST booklet, I mean, newsletter if they do.
Right. Is there any discussion on this?
Chris, are you good with it? I make a motion, we approve it.
Second motion.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Okay, number 12. Vote to approve or disapprove or table employee handbook for school year 2020, 2021.
And I think I sent you all a copy of that via email. I sent you the employee handbook, the student handbook, and the standard operating procedure.
Right.
Is any changes or revisions?
No major, no major. We, we did like some probably English language corrections, maybe.
Grammar?
Grammar. And, but no, no major changes.
I move to approve number 12.
Second.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Number 13, vote to approve or not approve the return to learn plan 2020, 2021.
That was one of the ones I sent to you, too. It's just talking about the procedures we're going through to make sure the students are wearing masks, that we're wearing masks, that we've disinfected, that we're taking every precaution possible to make sure that our students and teachers are safe.
The temperature and all that stuff that we've already talked about.
Right.
Are there questions?
Subject to change.
Subject to change, yeah.
It is a living, working document.
And some of the changes will be dictated?
Yes, oh, yes.
Is there a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Number 15, vote to approve or not approve the India Homa Public School Emergency Standard Operating Procedure for school year 2020, 2021.
This is pretty much the same, too. We have to update the crisis team every year so that we've got, you know, members that are accounted, have accountability. And that's about the only major change that we made in that.
Just the personnel. Is there a motion? I so move to approve.
Second, number 15.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 16, vote to approve or not approve India Homa Public School Distance Learning Plan for school year 2020, 2021.
Everybody, I made everyone a copy of that one.
Okay.
We've been working on this all week. And so this is.
Longer than that.
Right. And this is a living document, ever-changing possibly as well. Once we really get into this distance learning, we may, you know, have to revise. The first page is just about the blended learning, saying that we are a blended learning skill, and we have the IBEP. Well, that should be, instead of IBEP, we've changed it to distance learning, so I'll, I'll correct that. And equity of access, we've got to make sure that our students are able to access the internet if they're going to be at home. So this just talks about how that will be done. And then the alignment of the curriculum, we are using, if you'll notice on page four, EdMentum, Study Island, Acelus, ExactPath, which is a evaluation tool, Google Classroom, Dojo, Math Teacher Coach, Kahoot, Underaligned Curriculum, and then Zoom will be utilized to deliver some of the classroom lessons live. And all of these, particularly EdMentum and Acelus, are aligned with our Oklahoma standards. So the students will be using curriculum that is aligned. And then on page five, right now, we are looking at the EHDF for distance learning. That, that was one of the ones that we approved earlier, or y'all did. But in order for high school students to be kind of present currently, they've got to log in and work for 45 minutes per class per day, which would be the six classes, which will equal four hours and 30 minutes per day, or 18 hours a week. So that's what they're going to have to do if they are at home. And for elementary students, it's a little different. Grade pre-K through K is approximately 45 minutes a day. Grades one, two, three, be three hours daily, four through six, three hours daily, and seven through eight, four hours daily. And so we'll use the same criteria to award their credits as we do with our brick and mortar students. And they have certain competencies and standards that they have to master. And tests are built to the program, so they'll have to pass the test, make a certain grade. And we'll, we're going to monitor them closely to make sure they master the curriculum. And extracurricular activities, they'll be afforded the same opportunity that are brick and mortar. It'll be up to the parents and the students if they want to participate in the extracurricular activities. Like if they've got an animal and they want to participate in ag, showing their animals, they'll be able to do that.
How about athletics?
And athletics, same.
I know some schools are not allowing that.
Right. And the Fed teachers, I mean, yes, Fed teachers will follow the Fed guidance and the law for any of their distance learning students.
And this is subject to change?
Yes, absolutely. Once we get into it, you know, we may have to revisit it and make some changes.
It's a place to start. I move to approve.
Second.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes, and thank you all for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Number 17, vote to approve or not approve hiring Terry Slatten, part-time, hourly pay for custodial maintenance, maintenance for school year 2020, 2021.
It's just absolutely too much for one person if you clean like Laura Large does. And so Terry is going to help out part-time, and she'll be paid by the hour if she's approved. And she's been working this last, these last two weeks, and they're quite a team. The germs need to look out.
Being consistent, yeah.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number 18, vote to accept or not accept resignation of Ms. Deborah Wilson effective May 1, 2020.
We really, really hated to lose her. She has done a tremendous job with our reading students. But she has some compromised things that she felt like she just had to right now. And I told her, hopefully, if things get better, maybe, you know, second semester or next year, she can look at coming back, maybe.
Don't want anybody to put themselves in danger?
No, no. She's a lovely lady.
Regrettably, I'm move to approve. Move to accept.
I second his motion.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 19, vote to approve or disapprove giving cash public schools our alternative education allocation with the understanding that we have access for two of our students at any given time throughout the entire school year 2020, 2021.
This has really worked out well for us the last, oh, five or six or seven years. I think the Alt Ed money is probably about, what, $6,500, it's not a lot. And that allows us, if we have a student that's having a really difficult time here and needs to go to Alt Ed school, or if they need to do credit recovery, they can go over there. It's just got so many positives, and so it's worked out really well that we have two slots.
How many did we use last year? How many slots?
We used one.
Okay.
And that's a good thing.
But still, for that amount of money, that's pretty well a bargain.
Yes.
Well, and if, if we kept it, and the guidelines and the reports and everything, it's just.
Oh, yeah. And we couldn't afford to hire a teacher for that amount of money either.
Yeah, it's just the staffing. Make a motion to approve. I second the motion.
Webster.
Yes.
Bales.
Yes.
Cavall.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 20, select and vote to approve or disapprove a school board member to represent India Homa Public School Board of Education as a legislative liaison for the school year 2020, 2021.
The OSSBA contacts this person a lot with a lot of the things that are going on, and we might. and we might need to get people behind calling her.
We could table it, though.
We could table it, put JB in it.
JB, this is you.
I don't need no more mail.
They call you.
Well, it's just email.
I don't check mine.
Well, there you go. Not yet, it, it does keep you well informed.
Okay, so we have two that are unwilling to accept.
Who's that? You and JB?
Hey, yeah.
Well, I'll accept it.
Okay.
Unless Chris, unless I'm, if I'm jumping out ahead of you, Chris?
Fine, I'll do it.
Okay, Chris, glad.
All right, you're a legislator.
Okay, I.
Chris has been, you've been pretty active legislatively anyway, haven't you?
I try.
Perfect doctor.
They'll listen.
Glad, glad for Chris to do that. I'll help you out anytime you want, Chris.
Can I make a motion to approve Chris Webster for?
Okay, may I second that motion?
Yes.
Legislator, okay.
Webster?
Yes.
Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Good. Nice to have a volunteer.
Thank you, yeah.
Yes.
Number twenty-one. Approve or not approve memorandum of understanding between India Homa Public Schools and Kiowa Tribe Head Start Program for school year twenty 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 one.
We do this every year. We, uh, they have a memorandum of understanding, uh, and the actual head start for Kiowa, the lead is at Fort Sill, located over there, so.
I know they do some, a patching.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a document that ensures that we don't step on each other's toes.
Yeah, that's all it is.
I, I move to approve.
Second.
Webster?
Yes.
Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Number twenty-two. Discussion of board members' points.
Um, I didn't have any changes with the exception of Chris. I think you attended one course, didn't you?
Yeah, there should be a couple. You should see, I think, two or three more, yeah, coming in. I guess they're sending an invoice to Miss May Happy, maybe, I guess, okay.
I got one.
Okay. And it's working, online portal registration's working.
Okay. So, those are, that was the only change from last time.
And I need to get on it. Okay. Number twenty-three. Vote to approve, not approve, or table the following school fundraisers for twenty 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 one school year. A, the FFA sales receipts will be used for travel, FFA supplies and equipment, Google meet sales, black, uh, welcome back silent auction and dinner, FFA Christmas bake sale. B, all interesting classes, booths at the India Homa Birthday Celebration. And then B, athletic receipts will be used for athletic expenses and athletic expenses, suits, warmups, travel, et cetera. A, sales concession stands, signs, contributions. C, TSA sales receipts will be used for travel expenses, local, state, and national TSA supplies, equipment, et cetera. A, it's a bake sales booth at the Fall Carnival fundraisers in the Lawton area as needed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second, approve.
Webster?
Yes.
Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, number twenty-four. Vote to approve or not approve Attendance Internal Activities Review Committee for school year twenty 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 one.
And this is, uh, pretty much the same group that was on last year. And they, if, um, we have a student that is just chronically absent and they just are abusing the absences, they would have to go before this review committee. And they'd have to determine about the credit that they've received or not and what they'd have to do if they were to be given that credit. So, uh, they're a pretty important group.
It's a, it's a committee you hope you never can beat.
Exactly, and we hope students never have to go to them.
I move to approve.
Second.
Webster?
Yes.
Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Uh, number twenty-five. Vote to approve, uh, motion twenty-four carries. Number twenty-five. Vote to approve or not approve TechCLIP, Comprehensive Local Education Plan, School Advisory Committee for School Year twenty 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 one.
Uh, same, same group as last year, and they've all met during professional development, and I haven't received their minute yet. But, uh, the Comprehensive Local Education Plan, they're the ones that look forward to what our technology needs might be in the future, um, hopefully, five or ten years. They're looking, uh, in the future and, um, writing goals and that sort of thing. And I'll have that when I get their minutes back.
Move to approve.
Second.
Webster?
Yes.
Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Okay. Number twenty-six. To approve or not approve Title One School Advisory Committee for School Year twenty 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 one.
And it's mandated that if we have Title One funds, we have to have a Title One School Advisory Committee. And they have to meet a certain number of times, uh, during the year. And then we also have a parent committee that has to meet, and JB's, I think you may be the chairperson of that committee. So, we'll be meeting, usually, we have that meeting in January.
Move to approve.
Second.
Webster?
Yes.
Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Okay. Number twenty, uh, twenty-six carries. Number twenty-seven. Vote to approve or not approve Professional and Staff Development School Advisory Committee for School Year twenty 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 one.
And they're the committee that make recommendations about what we probably need to have in the way of professional and staff development. These first two days are pretty hooked up with mandated things we have to have, like, uh, bullying prevention, uh, child abuse reporting, um, now dyslexia, um, identifying dyslexic students. So, we have a lot that we have to cover that these first two days.
Bloodborne pathogens.
And bloodborne pathogens.
Your favorite.
You can't forget that one.
Can't forget that one, no, never can.
No, and now for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Move to approve.
Second.
Webster? Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, wait a minute, I think I've got pi, oh, I guess that was twenty-seven. Yeah, no, it's fine. Twenty-eight. Vote to approve or not approve Gifted and Talented School Advisory Committee for School Year twenty 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 one. And, uh, gifted child education programs means these special instructional programs, supportive services, unique educational materials, learning setting, and other educational service, services, which differentiate, supplement, and support the regular education program in meeting the needs of gifted and talented child.
And again, these are mostly the same people that were on last year, and we have to have a GT advisory committee. And, um, we get, it's usually in the vicinity of about thirty-six thousand dollars for gifted and talented, and that's split between all of, it's part of all the teacher's salary. So, that is part of the teacher's salary. So, everyone has to write on their lesson plans what they do above and beyond for the GT students. So, this, this group is really important to make sure that we have the guidelines followed explicitly.
You're accountable to meet those needs for each, each student identified.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Webster?
Yes.
Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Okay. And number twenty-nine. Vote to approve or not approve Healthy and Fit School Safe School Advisory Committee for School Year twenty 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 one.
And again, we have this, uh, every year, and they're mostly the same people returning. Um, I can't see anyone new on there. But they've been really busy this year because we really have been working to make sure we have a healthy and fit school. And, uh,
Yeah.
in fact, I think, uh, Mr. Gibson was going tonight to pick up some PPE equipment. We, everybody's just been really, uh, working long hours, and Terry and all the teachers, uh, just everyone. It's just great to have the kind of staff and faculty that we have.
You know, just like Chris there, if one of you gets identified with it, then the whole group has to go into quarantine, and that's what's gonna happen here with you teachers. Well, you know, somebody comes in.
I'm not gonna spend fifteen minutes with any of you.
You know, it's, it's a, it's a big deal. It's a big deal.
Yeah, it's pretty frightening.
I appreciate every one of you for the risk that you're taking.
Well, I look at this as, how many of these people actually volunteer? Or do you just kinda have to assign some of them to that? I mean, this is a lot of responsibilities for a lot of different folks.
It is, yes.
A lot of, you know, they're wearing a lot of hats here.
Yeah, that's part of, but, part of public school.
So, did we vote on twenty-nine?
No, we have not. We don't have a motion yet.
I will. I will second Chris's motion.
Webster? Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
And new business?
No new business.
No new bit, new business?
I wish we could do J, do business. I wouldn't feel so bad.
You got anything, Farsh? All right, then, number thirty-one. Is there a motion to return? Got a motion to, I'll second that motion.
Webster?
Yes.
Bales?
Yes.
Cavall?
Yes.
Can y'all sign this minutes?
Yes.